The workers in Emeryville cannot live in Emeryville since Emeryville is too high. I mean, life is very high everywhere, but Emeryville is the most expensive area. So, we cannot even rent. We cannot even pay our rent. We cannot even, I mean, it's very hard to live with the minimum wage. So, I, what I want to say is about the minimum wage hardly. In order to lead our life, we need support from you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ty Hudson?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Atkins and City Council. My name is Ty Hudson. I'm with you night here, Local 2850. And some of our members said it a lot more, a lot of it, what I would want to say a lot more eloquently than I will or could, but I just wanted to add a couple of sort of detailed things. Our union definitely supports raising the minimum wage and we really are, you know, thank you for bringing this and the staff for bringing this item to today. And we were part of raising the minimum wage along with SCIU 10 to 1 in Oakland and definitely want to, you know, would second everything that our brother Gary Jimenez said a few minutes ago. Just on a couple of detailed things. One, on the staff, mentioned an exemption for collective bargaining agreements. That is, if it's done correctly, something that we support as it can help workers in a collective bargaining situation, figure out where it's the best place to put their money, for example, into affordable health insurance that would otherwise be difficult to win. However, it shouldn't be a blanket exemption just because a kind of collective bargaining agreement exists. It should be something that has to be explicitly agreed to by both parties because otherwise then you just get everybody's wages just getting lower because of the collective bargaining agreement exists. So, I'd be happy to answer further questions about that if necessary. We also think it's extremely important to include, as Measure FF in Oakland did, a service charge protection. Some of you may have seen news coming out in various local papers about some restaurants in Berkeley and San Francisco in particular deciding to move to a service charge instead of a gratuity system so that they, so that the management of the restaurant can keep the service charge and the customers think it's a gratuity and therefore sort of reverse the effect of the minimum wage increase. A simple service charge protection that was like the one that was included in Oakland would essentially solve that problem. So, we want to encourage you to do that as well. So, those are just the details that we added and we do hope that you, that not just the council, but everybody here who wants to support will come join our members at the picket line at the Oaks Club tomorrow. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. John Nemec?
I have a slightly different message than the rest of the folks. My name is John Nemec and I operate this small manufacturing company here in Emeryville. It's a family business. We have, you know, 50 people and we basically manufacture apparel accessories, mainly suspenders. Company named Suspenders Factory. We have started the business in 1977 in the garage in San Francisco and basically we built the business up from 1977 all the way up to today. We have 50 people today and we were always able to keep the step with the minimum wage. So, currently though, if we go from $9 to $1,225 and if we add 72 hours of paid sick leave, that's basically a 40% increase of our wages. Now, we don't compete with hotels in the neighborhood. We compete with the stuff that's made in China. So, basically for us it's very critical and the change in the minimum wage is basically extremely steep. I mean, I don't know why it's, you know, all of a sudden, I mean, there was a change recently from $8.25 to $9. We can live with that. Be prepared to basically increase the wage to $10 by January 1916 or consequently these 9%, 10% increases, we can swallow that. But it's impossible basically to jump and have a 36, a 40% increase from one year to the next. Now, the way we keep step with increasing the minimum wage, we basically need to increase the productivity of our folks. So, what we do, we purchase automated equipment. We spent last year, sorry, in 2013, we spent about $200,000 on automated, on modern equipment. Our sales are $3.5 million and our payroll is over $1 million. So, if you take the increase of 40% on a payroll, I'm talking about production payroll. We have additional payroll for office employees and so on. So, if you take the increase of 40% over $1 million, we are basically out of business. Now, nationally, the wages increase maybe 2%, maybe 3% or, you know, and so on, et cetera. If you increase the wage on any company by 40%, we are going out of business. Now, let me also mention this. Our people don't do so poorly. Now, we have, let me say this, we have a bunch of immigrants like I am. I came from, you know, Czech Republic and, or Czechoslovakia then and I had $20 in my pocket. I never collected a penny of unemployment. Should I stop?
That's your time, yeah.
Okay.
Fellow comments, three minutes.
So anyhow, I would just think that it's way too steep. If it could be slowed down for our company.
Thank you.
Over a period of time, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Well, it sounds like that gentleman there isn't running, doesn't have a viable business. Can't afford to pay his employees anything higher than poverty wages. So, it's not a viable business. No, I'm sorry. I'm speaking here. No, I'm sorry. I'm speaking. So, we all remember Measure C, the living wage for hotel workers passed in 2005. The entire Emeryville elite, save Ruth Atkins, came out against it and there were all these dire warnings that hotel industry is going to collapse and the hospitality industry is kaput in Emeryville and it passed and we actually are now increasing the number of hotels. And so, that was, so you always get business people up here, you know, crying in their, in the beer and saying that they're going to go be driven out of business and maybe some will, maybe some non-viable ones will, but that's, you know, we don't want non-viable businesses in our town. So, you know, we have, $110,000 was spent to defeat Measure C and the people of Emeryville said, we don't care how much money you're spending on this. This is, we are interested in economic justice here. And so, you know, that's what people here have told us and I think it's sort of behooves us to move forward with this and I think we should take a leadership role like we did with Measure C. The people in Emeryville support this. We know that. It's extremely important, but the way the staff is suggesting this happens, if you look all the way up to 2021, we're still only $13.26 an hour here in Emeryville and I just think that's just not good enough. I think we have a lot to make up for here in this town with, after, you know, a generation of all this fast food and service sector jobs that we're importing here, I think we have a lot to make up for here and we have, we have to create a town that's not like the town we have been creating up till now. And so, looking here, $13.26 in 2021, no, it's not good enough. We need a pathway to $15 an hour. That's reasonable. And also the gentleman that talked about the service charge protection, that's extremely critical because we know that employers will try to game the system and that's like incredibly cynical, shocking to hear that, but not surprising. So, we need to have protections like that, make sure that the employers can't do an end run around this. But anyways, I'd like to see that, I'd like to be proud of my city here, like why it was when we passed Measure C. So, I think we should do a pathway to $15 an hour and let's take a leadership role here and just be a little better than Oakland and, you know, we don't have to shoot as low as Oakland. So, I strongly encourage you to move forward with $15 an hour. Thank you.
Bill?
Bill Reuter. Mayor Atkins, City Councilors, let me bring a slightly different perspective on this issue. I'm a longtime resident here in the city. I've been serving on the Finance Advisory Committee and more recently I've been serving on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. My experience there illustrates or demonstrates to me that the city has been smart and adept and wise at supporting its business community, both large businesses and small businesses, and that's appropriate. In fact, that's helped us in the long run. Now, the other leg of this business is taking care of the folks who come into our city to work on hourly wages in retail and in the businesses of that sort and that kind of work. I think that we can lead here. I don't think there's any particular economic disadvantage to the community as a whole if we're bold, if we go for $15 an hour or try to get there as fast as we can. That's the right thing to do. That's the honorable thing to do and I think the economically sound thing to do for the city. Thanks.
Hi, Judy Timmell. I just wanted to point out that $12 an hour on a full-time basis, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is translates to $24,000 a year. So, you can imagine trying to live on that in the Bay Area. So, yes, we do need a minimum wage ordinance. We need a path to $15. Because of the amount of retail and service industries in Emeryville, I think we can afford to lead, as Bill said. We need labor standards as well and I think not just for formula retail. I think that needs to apply across the board. And in terms of the suddenness of the raising of the minimum wage, let's look at this over the long term. How many years has it been since we actually had an increase in the minimum wage? If this had been a gradual thing, we probably believe would be way beyond $15 at this point. So, it's way long overdue. That's why it seems sudden. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I've been thinking a lot about Martin Luther King, reading a lot right now. It's important. And thinking about his economic and social bill of rights. And I was struck when reading some of his words when he said, "What good is having the right to sit at a lunch counter if you cannot afford to buy the hamburger?" And I think that sums it all up really. And when you think of how many of our workers struggle, they work two jobs, they work three jobs, they will have part-time jobs or even if they have full-time jobs, the pay is atrocious and they can't live on it and we can't expect them to live on it. And I think we need to reevaluate what's been happening and the obscene profits that go on and the lack of social consciousness. That seems to cloud our view of what people need to live. And I think, given his words, given the time, I think we, I know Emeryville can do better and I know we can be leaders and I'm hoping we'll start off with 50 and go from there. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, I'm closing public comment. Council comments?
Mayor Atkins, I think staff has presented us with a fairly good outline of how we can move this forward, getting information from the, you know, from public meetings and using that, utilizing that. And so, I would propose that we would move forward with what the staff proposal is here in terms of the setup of moving this minimum wage action forward.
I really don't like this timeline at all. I, there are a couple of things here. First of all, an online survey. Online surveys are not very useful, right? To the degree that you're going to get feedback from people who like online surveys, then they're useful. But I don't think that that's going to give us any kind of necessary viable, helpful information. I also think that two community meetings is overdoing it. We're having a meeting right now. We're talking about the minimum wage right now. The chamber knows about this, right? They, the businesses in town should know about this. And again, my time's up. No. And I think we are, we're behind. We can't keep asking people to work and live in poverty. And so, we need a more compressed timeline than the one that we're looking at here. The community input, I'm not sure what we're looking for, right? In terms of making a policy, we're going to have people, it's going to look a lot like what I got tonight. A lot of people supporting the minimum wage, talking about a path to 15, right? And then folks talking about the implications for their business. That framework is not going to change, no matter how long we wait. That's the debate that we're entering into and I think that we need to make a decision much sooner. Late 2015, early 2016 is too far out. It's being done all around us and the time to get it done is now. The research has been done by UC Berkeley. We can't ask staff to try and outperform the researchers at UC Berkeley on this issue.
I have a comment that I'd like to make, which is that, as Michelle commented, we had a city living wage ordinance that was passed in 2006 that pertains to city employees and those who contract with the city. When we, council first talked about this a few months ago, I made the distinction between what are we trying to do? Are we trying to do a minimum wage? Are we trying to do a living wage? And the, it seemed to me that what we wanted to do, or what I would like to do, is have a, set a floor to raise the level of poverty up so that if someone were able to work full time at that base wage, they would earn more than what would qualify them for any kind of public assistance program. And $15 an hour basically gets us there, but with our city living wage ordinance, we're currently for this year at $14.03. So, I would like to propose some sort of wage package that starts at 1403 to make it consistent with our other living wage ordinance. And then we could talk about sick, paid sick leave and work standards and some other things that might be a little harder to flesh out. But I would propose that the city explore starting us off in 2015 at 1403. Actually, that rate will go up with the CPI as of July 1 of 2015, but basically the point is to be consistent with our city living wage ordinance. But we shouldn't do a wage that still qualifies people for Medi-Cal or some of these other public assistance programs. And California now has expanded Medi-Cal eligibility, which is at 138% of the federal poverty level. So, we need to figure out what an hourly wage is that would exceed that level. And I think it's closer to 1483 when I, when this was last in our agenda packet. But I did a little bit of, we had the federal poverty level table added to our packet and we worked it out. But anyway, that's my, what I would like us to see happen is that, it's not to say that there's enough jobs that are full-time at that base rate and that not everybody who works a minimum wage job will be able to work all the hours that they want, but if they were full-time, that they would not qualify for any kind of public assistance. That's kind of raising people out of poverty that they, so they can support themselves. That's a living wage.
Mayor Atkins, what are you thinking about in terms of time? How, when do you want to do this?
Well, I think, I would like to see, the next CPI jump up is in July. That's half a year away. I think we could implement something by July. I think that's reasonable. I do think people, the business community needs to be informed and I don't, we haven't done, the city has not done its outreach to the business community. I think they just need to know this is coming down the pike. But I would like to see an implementation date of July.
But that's just for the hourly wage and then the other considerations?
Well, we could add in what Lift Up did for, around sick leave. I mean, that's not, that's a no-brainer. But what remains a little bit fuzzy to me is what kind of labor standards and if we're here to dictate that across a bunch of industries that we really don't know very much about or whatever. So, I have, around that particular piece, I need to learn a lot more before I would feel comfortable legislating about it.
That makes some sense. That makes a lot of sense. I would support that with a July, you know, target rate of July.
Okay.
That particular segment, we would move forward with that.
Are we carving out just the retail worker's bill of rights to do some further study on, but then adopting the other pieces of Lift Up Oakland, like the no carve-outs?
Service charge protection.
And the service charge protection. I'm trying to understand exactly what we're picking up from Lift Up Oakland because I want to pick up all of it, right? And then go ahead and go with the 1403.
You know, the scheduling thing is huge in the retail industry. They just drive people crazy and make life almost impossible. I think we, I think that the total package we've seen is really important for all the different aspects because retail tends to just parse people and have them change schedules so quickly. It's really a problem. I mean, it almost means more than the, you know, the nickel and diming a little bit higher than Oakland. No, the total look at what we've been given means that someone can live with dignity. And so, it's not just the dollar amount. It's really the, the working conditions are really important. And I agree that, I think it's good to have a region-wide issue. I think that not, you know, surging ahead of Oakland, I don't think is, that could have consequences that we need to consider. I'm, you know, I'm not so, I don't feel the need to, you know, step out in front and be the absolute leader for wages. I feel like we have to make sure the working conditions are really good first and that we have a region that is doing that, that we embrace our neighbor Oakland who is looking at that, is looking at the real working conditions. I think that's really important. And the strength of matching a city means that businesses don't see any advantage to go from one city to the next other than other factors. So, you know, that's, that's important. I don't think we should, you know, step out with a higher wage and reduce working conditions or anything like that. I think it's important to really look at the region is important.
Well, that's not what I'm proposing. Instead, I'm asking for a two-step process and to fast-track the wage issue and the Lift Up Oakland model now, knowing that what we have with the retail worker's bill of rights, which is pretty recent in San Francisco, might deserve further study. It's not something that we've translated yet over to the East Bay. And trust me, I want to have a retail worker's bill of rights over here in Emeryville. I mean, you know, large formula retail, I used to work in retail, uh-huh, in management moons and moons ago and they have software that can tell them how many bars of soap they have on hand in the building and when they need to order it and when the peaks and valleys come in their sales history, but they can't schedule people predictably, right? I mean, it's something that I think we can also lead on in the East Bay, but I think staff is going to need a little bit more time on that last piece of it, whereas the Lift Up Oakland model is already, is already there for us. But if you don't, if your issue is with the wage, right, the 1403, right, that, that's a different story. But I'm saying, I do want to do both.
I want to do the faster scheduling. I don't think two meetings are necessary.
Yeah.
And because, you know, we need to, in effect, move as a region. Oakland has already moved.
Already on there.
We don't want to cut out, we want to make sure we hear from all the businesses. We might not have heard a lot of things we need to hear. But at the same time, it just seems that, you know, if we, we have catching up to do because we need to have our region function as one in this way. And so, you know, I'm open to a higher rate if I can see that it's not going to harm our city in some way, but I just want to make sure that it's considered.
I don't know that it's going to harm our city so much as help workers. And I think that it might also, with us leading, other people might be pressured to move. And I think that that's, that's how it, how it may work. I don't necessarily think it's going to put us at some kind of competitive disadvantage. And I mean, all the points that Ruth is making, right, about people not having to access social services, right, when they have kind of a floor under them, it's really important. And then also, you know, thinking about not just workers, but all the folks who spoke to us today, they have families, right? Right now in the United States, 20% of children live in poverty. There just came, a study came out this week, 50% of public schoolchildren are now living in poverty. And in Emeryville, it's much higher than that in terms of our school population. So, it's, it will have a redounding effect, right? Not just for the individual workers, but also for their family. So, I'm very supportive of the 1403, but I also hope that we just, we go with the Lift Up Oakland model.
So, one other comment I'll editorialize about just a little bit. I know the hour's late, but every once in a while, the feds come out with a jobs report and say, oh, the jobs report is getting great because 250,000 jobs were added to the, to the economy. And if you were to think about the stock market in the same way, you know, say, oh, the stock market's doing great, there's so many more open-ended mutual funds and shares of stock available to purchase and that's why the stock market's doing so great. Well, that's not how they view a solid stock market. They view it on the value. And the creation in this country of more and more kind of minimum wage jobs that don't go anywhere is, and just because the volume of those jobs is increasing does not mean that our economy and our jobs forecast is getting any better. In fact, it's getting worse. So, I feel very strongly about this issue. I've pushed for every wage ordinance in the city. So, at this point, I would like to move that we give staff direction for an implementation date of July 1, using, corresponding with our city living wage, wage rate. implementation date of July 1, using, corresponding with our city living wage, wage rate for this year, that'll be adjusted by CPI, and that we incorporate Lift Up Oakland measures that, that the Oakland voters just, just passed. So that's my motion.
Oh, I second that.
May, can I just make a comment? Because I, I don't need to keep us here any longer, but I just want to support my co-counsel in this and just say that wage disparity is a social justice issue. And, you know, in light of Martin Luther King Day this week, I, I think this is a huge step that we're taking. And I'm proud to be part of this movement.
Do we need a vote or does staff have a sense of the council at this point?
Mayor, if I may. So just for clarification, so we'll bring back a proposed ordinance? Or would you like us to, to do a community meeting? Or are we just going to go ahead and bring something back to you?
Well, the business community needs to be notified that this is happening. There needs to, people need a few months to get used to this.
So, okay. Would you like to, but, but we can bring forward, I think at the, maybe whenever we can put together some proposed ordinance, based off of the direction that we got tonight?
Yes.
And then, you know, after that, if you decide that we need to do additional outreach, you know, we will. So we'll bring it forward.
That sounds good.
Okay.
And continuing to work on the, we'll revisit the other piece of it with the retail workers' bill of rights, please.
Labor standards separate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. I know the hour's late. Thank you for speaking. So we have 7.3, which is a resolution to buy body cams. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any exception?
Me. I have to, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this, but I, I just want to say quickly that the reason I'm voting no is that, for me, heightened surveillance of the public is something that I'm always concerned about. And I, I feel like I need the more detailed policies in, in front of me. That said, our staff has been working on this a long time. It came to the technology committee a year ago or so. And while I, I understand the motivations behind it and I appreciate their, their hard work, I can't support it right now.
Who did the motion second to that one?
I think it was Nora.
Davis Martinez. In favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right. So this takes us to administrative items. And 8.1 is a resolution to appoint someone to serve on the Commission on Aging. Do I, do I hear a motion? No motion?
I, I move that we support Richard Ambro. Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah, the Commission on Aging.
Buenas noches y muchas gracias a todos por escucharnos.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
I'll second your motion. I'll do this, even though the senior commission voted to support Eleanor Liu. I think she's very interested. She'll be, she will be a good member of the commission. Richard Ambro has become, been coming to commission meetings for a couple of years now. He has served on subcommittees for the Commission on Aging. And he's vitally, he brings a fresh new perspective. So I'd second your motion.
All right. Do you want to speak?
I just got it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The second administrative item is 8.2, which is an appointment to the Emeryville Oversight Board, which the Oversight Board is responsible for overseeing the dissolution of the redevelopment agency and various incentive activities. I would like to appoint Diane Martinez to serve on the Oversight Board.
Second. Great idea.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we have a, in the revised agenda, we have 8.3, which is a resolution around declaring January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Emeryville. And I wanted to put this on in part because we had a sting operation at an establishment that used to exist here. And it's a, it's a point of trying to raise awareness around human trafficking that's happening, that happened even within our city limits. And that it's something that I'm not particularly proud about and want to just raise awareness about this. Did the police chief want to speak to this as well?
Certainly. Human trafficking is, has been on the forefront of law enforcement and the criminal justice system for probably the last five years. One of the leaders in pushing it in California has been the Alameda County District Attorney Nancy O'Malley. The extent of human trafficking is, is large. There's about $32 million. It's worldwide is an industry in trafficking of individuals. In Alameda County, we have done quite a bit to try to combat the human trafficking. As the, as the mayor mentioned, we had a sting operation here in Emeryville that was over a two-year investigation. We were hoping to have it go back into some of the larger people that are involved in it. Unfortunately, it wasn't as extensive as we thought it was, but it was fairly extensive. We were able to make a dent in the, not just by what was in the massage parlor in Emeryville, but there was actually a path that went from Northern California to Southern California of the girls. So we also participate in ACTFED, which is Alameda County Vice Enforcement Teams, which is aimed mainly solely at the prostitution of young people and human trafficking of young people. So we have been involved in the city, in the police department with this in Alameda County for quite some time. And it is a very important issue that is on the forefront of all law enforcement.
So I want to read this resolution. Well, is there a motion to?
So moved.
And I'll second it. Any exception? No. So I want to read this just because I think it's important to raise this issue. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Emeryville, declaring the month of January 2015 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Emeryville. Whereas the city of, the City Council of the City of Emeryville recognizes that human trafficking is a growing problem worldwide, and that California, and especially the San Francisco Bay Area, has been identified as a hub for human trafficking activity. And whereas human trafficking involves the commercial exchange and exploitation of humans, including forced prostitution, sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery. And whereas human trafficking predators target those that are most vulnerable, including an estimated 2 million children who are trafficked for child labor and sexual exploitation. And whereas victims of human trafficking suffer severe emotional, psychological, and physical terrors at the hands of their captors, who instill fear to keep them enslaved. And whereas the City Council of the City of Emeryville is dedicated to sending a strong message to perpetrators that human trafficking will not be tolerated in our community. And whereas individuals can learn signs to identify a victim of child trafficking and how to respond quickly. And whereas the City Council of the City of Emeryville believes that it is the responsibility of all of us to be informed about human trafficking and work to stop it. Whereas January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby declares January 2015 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Emeryville, and urges Emeryville as a community to become educated on the ways to identify, prevent, and stop human trafficking. So thank you for bearing with me on that. 8.3 is a transportation committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Any exception?
No.
No? All right. Any communication and reports, department heads? Charlie?
Just for the benefit of those who may not have heard it earlier, and just to repeat for those who did, there will be a scoping meeting next Tuesday, one week from tonight, at 6:30 PM on the environmental impact report for the Sherwin-Williams project here in the council chambers. I just want to underscore, this is not a city council meeting, nor a planning commission meeting. It will be facilitated by our environmental review consultant, but it is a public meeting. And the purpose of the meeting is to solicit input on the topics to be covered in the EIR, including alternatives to the proposed project. I also want to underscore that this is not a meeting to consider the merits of the proposed project itself. The purpose of the meeting is to solicit public comments on the content of the EIR. Again, it's next Tuesday at 6:30, January 27. I also just want to note that the notice of preparation for the EIR also can be commented on, separate and apart from the scoping meeting, if people wish to. And the deadline for those comments is next Friday, January 30 at 5:00 PM.
Any other department heads? Council members? Yep.
I have something. I learned last week that our poet laureate, Sarah Kibinski, who is a neighbor of mine on 45th Street, is moving out of Emeryville. Her rents were raised 40%. And she was given 60 days' notice. She has a young child. And, you know, she and her partner are being forced to leave our community. In light of this, I have been thinking about tenants' rights protection. And I know something has come before that, Housing Committee, back in 2013. And nothing happened with that. There was no direction given to staff, is my understanding. So I would like to agendize an item on a, at a future meeting. I would love to have staff prepare an updated report and suggestions on what we can do to protect the, the people who are, live in similar situations and whose rents are increasing at these dramatic rates. And I know it's not necessarily going to address the majority of renters in Emeryville, because I know there are limitations on who we can protect and what types of domiciles we can apply these restrictions to. But I, I am very saddened to see Sarah leaving my street.
Any other council members? I have a couple of comments. Apropos of that, she, she sent us an, an email. And she loves the work that she's done for the city. And even though she, she'll be living in Richmond, she wants to continue her work, which has already been tagged by some other, the poetry on the go-round, for example, has been tagged as a best practice and is going to be moving on to, I think, BART or something. So anyway, people paid attention to what she's brought to our community. And I thank Sarah for continuing on to complete her term, even though she's been pressured and forced out of the city because of the rent increase. It happened to a relative of hers as well, who had to leave the city. So, and lastly, I attended East Bay Economic Development Alliance legislative reception last week. And we have the dubious distinction of having the largest increase in condo prices in the county. So all this talk about affordable housing tonight is very germane. And the pressures in Emeryville are real. So I just wanted to let people know about that. We have vacancies on some standing committees. You can look at the green agenda for, for details. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.